Well, good morning. Welcome to staff meeting Wednesday, February the thirteenth, twenty twenty four. My daughter's birthday. She's twelve. My wife's birthday is tomorrow, Tom. And Valentine's Day.
And Halloween.
It's the triple whammy. A lot of pressure on you. There's a lot of pressure, but but today we got some wonderful guests joining us this morning and um we're excited to dig into staff meeting. So our CFO, Lindsay Poe-Rizzo, take it away.
Thank you, sir. Uh I also want to point out tomorrow's Halloween. If you want to not observe Valentine's Day, you can observe second Halloween. Instead, so we will be having some Halloween treats here in finance. Uh if you want to stop by. Um I'll also be dressed appropriately at the commission meeting. So you know, I know I can see the looks of confusion, but you should be used to me by now. So as Chairman Beatty did say, we do have some very distinguished guests with us today. Um you all know the Hugo Wall School. At WSU does terrific work for public administration. And so we have Dr. Wow and Dr. Shin, who are here with us. Who have been working on some projects that we have used our allocation of special revenues from the WSU Mill Levy to do. They've helped us with some revenue forecasting. But then um Dr. Wow actually found some really interesting information that was put out by the Governor Government Finance Officers Association. And proposed to look at revenues uh generated in the county in a whole new way that tells an entirely new story about information. And so we have been, I mean, and to be fair, we all know I'm a I'm a big old nerd, but this is riveting, fascinating stuff. So um we've shown it to the uh leadership team and now we are excited to be able to show it all to you. And so I I know I told you, Commissioner, that this is gonna be, you're gonna love this. So just wait. So with that, um I would appreciate it if Dr. Well could come to the podium and then Dr. Shannon and kind of tell you a little bit about themselves. Why they're interested in this and why they're eminently qualified to do this work for us. And then you can see that the report they've produced is at your desk. And so please feel free to uh look at that, too. So if that'll turn it over to you.
Very good. Welcome. We're glad you're joining us this morning.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. Uh my name is David Guo. I joined Hugo Wall School in twenty twenty two as the Region Distinguished Professor of Public Finance. Before that, I was um working at Florida International University for fourteen years. So probably budgeting finance is always my research area, especially um on the state and local government. Um so after I got here, I mean, Lindsay Lindsay kind of start that conversations because I said, you know, my I I think I send this message several times at different locations. I'm a strong believer of this connection between academic and practice. So uh I was really impressed by, you know, at the interview stage. I was introduced to the local practitioner already, see the Hugo Wall School's a strong support from the alumni. And then once I got here, I started a conversation with Lindsay Lawrence and, you know, I'm here. And I'm trying to find something I can help the local government. And Lindsay say, yeah, how about the help us do a revenue forecasting? At that time, I was just reading the GFOA. They have an annual magazine. They're talking something. I know they have several initiatives called rethinking budgeting, rethinking revenue, those kind of things. I just read that report. It's talking about they call the revenue per acre. Linking your financial information to your land use policy. Then I immediately talked to Lindsay, are you interested in doing this kind of stuff? I mean, I can definitely produce something like this for the for the county. And, you know, this right on, so we just formed the team, we start this work. So before I get into that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Shen and Oscar to do a little introduction of herself as well.
Hello, everybody. My name is.
Welcome, Dr. Shen.
Thank you. I'm providing the technical support. My name is Rowan Shen. I am the Assistant Professor in the Hugo Wall School. I joined the school from two thousand nineteen. And in general, my research focus on urban sustainability and community development and GIS analysis is one of my specialty. So I see this project a great opportunity that combine my research focus with Dr. Was research. Uh see the combination of land use policy and the uh public finance revenue. So it's my great honor to contribute to this project. Thank you.
Okay, so um I would start. Um so I just want to acknowledge this is prepared by the Kansas Public Finance Center and Hugo Wall School of Public Affairs. Um besides us, we also have graduate students. This is always our tradition to get the students involved, to get to give them the hands-on experience. So I do need to acknowledge the work and effort by those two great graduate students, Salmon and John. So um a little bit background. So in order to do this, we need to uh collect a lot of um data. I mean, forgive us, from the academic side, we are crazy about those data. So we get the budget document, we get the act for you know, property tax later from the appraisal office, um you know, sales and the use tax collection. And um you know, of course, this is you you see a lot of graphs in this presentation because this is really thinking about geospatial relationship with your financial uh information. So we also need to get into that GIS layer document. So just uh before I dive into this, this is still um overview, maybe you know this already, but thinking about this local government, county or city. Land is really important. They're thinking about our revenue compensation. The largest share is still property tax. I'm getting this one from the adopted twenty twenty four budget. So this is for the old operating fund, um two hundred three million from property tax. I mean, because we lumped some all those charges and fees, that becomes the second category. But if you're thinking about sales and use tax, this is actually the second largest one is thirty, I mistaken thirty nine point six million. And in this, in in Kansas, it's statewide, six six point five percent. Countywide, we have one percent here. But we do have all those municipalities, they can choose to have their local option sales tax as well. They're ranging from point five, if if they elected to do that, point five to three percent. Borders is the one has the three percent. And then you have the motor vehicle. So the reason I bring this up is I just want to give you an overview. This is the revenue competition. Then you can see how important is the property tax and the sales tax. If you look at this one on the left, this is the general fund. Property tax plus sales tax takes up seventy um six percent. If you take all the operating fund together, I think that percentage is still over sixty percent something, right? So if this is why I want to show this one first, because this analysis is focusing on profit tax and sales tax. I'll explain that later, why it's only sales tax, not including the use tax. So if you take a look of the trend of our sales and and use tax from two thousand fourteen to twenty twenty two. This is, it looks like, you know, sales tax is not, is tend to be fluctuating, not like the property tax, you can see the kind of continue um growing. And also, another thing I want to point out here, you can see those are kind of orange-ish. That's the the proportion of the use tax. And you can notice it's actually after two thousand, I'll say after two thousand eighteen. You can see that proportion is increasing. It's because in two thousand eighteen, there's a South Dakota uh versus uh welfare thing, because then they changed the definition how you collect the internet uh internet sales tax. Previously, you need to have a physical nexus. Now you only have the economic nexus. I know Kansas a little bit dramatic at the beginning, but that kind of correct that. But that's why you see that proportion going up. So then if you look at the growth rate, um apparently you can still see the fluctuation I just talked about, but definitely that use tax, you can see jump and up and down a lot. So this is, this is the kind of sales and use tax. Uh this is what I'm talking about. In this county, all the municipalities, they have different uh um rates. Uh I think that's one thing I observed quite interesting um in last year election time. You know, I know Sagr County, I particularly look at the Sagr County and Butler County. For those local government who put the sales tax on the ballot. If I remember correctly, Butler County, all the municipalities who want to have the sale tax passed. Not in the Sagr County. We have only, I think it's only Derby get that passed. So um sample size is too small, but the only thing I noticed is uh Butler County, they all put some kind of property relief in their language on the ballot. So that might be something we can think about. Okay, now it's true down to why we want to do this with so-called revenue per acre. Because previously you would talk about, okay, total revenue, revenue from property tax, revenue from sales tax. All you are thinking about revenue per capita. But this time is introducing this one revenue per acre. They're thinking about, I try to put this something for you to, you know, understand this. Thinking about you purchase a car, if you care about the fuel efficiency. What kind of question you ask? Do you want to know that car, that full tank can get you how many miles? Or you want to know it is that MPG, the mile per gallon? Right? You can see those two cars, a pickup and a sedan, which car is more fuel efficient? Because then we are looking at is the mile per gallon. One gallon gasoline can support me how many miles? Right? So this is kind of drew down to, if you're thinking about this, it's called a fuel efficiency stuff. Right? So this is, this is kind of similar to now you're thinking about the revenue and the land. Is this is why we call that uh property value comparison? If you take that car example, right? Another example you can think about is if you go to a grocery store. You you but when you buy the banana, do you buy it by bunch or you look at the, you know, price by per pound? So that's, that's another thing you can think about when we talk about this revenue per acre thing. I put two, this is hypothetical example, don't take it too seriously here uh about the numbers. I'm but so thinking about a golf course and uh single family uh residential house, right? Previously, we're probably just looking at on the left side. Oh, okay. Yeah, the total value of a golf course, seven point five million. That single family house, two hundred fifty thousand. Then we're thinking about, okay, yeah, of course, the golf course will generate more revenue. But now let's say put the acreage into consideration. Then you can see that golf course in terms of revenue per acre, um I put, you know, one hundred one hundred fifty acres, I think is roughly um close to the reality. That becomes to uh, what is that, fifty, that fifty thousand, right? And then you can see, because I intentionally just put one acre for that uh um single family house. So that per acre is still two hundred fifty thousand. So now you can see the difference here. Right? So it's really thinking about this one. It's really, can you maximize the economic yield from every acre of land? This is why at the very beginning, I said, land is very important to the local government. And land is a fixer-motner. Right? So this is, this is why we can trigger the way we're thinking about, maybe we can think this differently. But actually, this is not something new. Back to the twenty thirty's, they're already talking about this. I don't know why they kind of disappear, but yeah, so this is, this is the it's it's definitely not something new. Uh but so this we come up with how we want to do this, right? We call it revenue per acre. So again, we need to get all those GIS information. And then we collect the property test here. We can only use sales tax, even though I talk about the sales and use tax. But in this analysis, we can only use the sales tax, because you think about this way. The way we can do this, because property tax is easy. Every parcel, they will have a property tax. You have a price value, access value, taxable value, then you apply to the meal rate, you get the property tax. Sales tax, you know, there's a location, there's a building, you have different business there that you can calculate the the sales. But use tax is not because their location is not in this region. So we cannot, we need to exclude those use tax part. So we got the, then we get a parcel by parcel examination. So we get the parcel, get those parcel. How much of the property test can generated? How much of the sales test can generated? Then you have a, you know, total area of that parcel. So then you take those and divide it by parcel, that acreage, then you'll get this so-called revenue per acre. So then we try to, as I said, we will have a lot of pictures. So this is, so we did is from two thousand fifteen to two hundred twenty-two. We provide this one here in the presentation, in the um in the report itself, in the appendix, you will have the, you you know, year by year. So this is, this is the profit tax. Remember, when we talk about the tech of property tax, we still need to remember one thing is this one is only the uh county only. Meaning we only apply that, um forgive me, I'm not remembering that uh new levy exactly. I think it's twenty nine point four. Okay, thank you. So this is applying that mute rate only. Now you can see this is the difference between, you know, two thousand fifteen and twenty twenty-two. You can already identify some color changes. So basically, if you look at the um, so if you get more kind of ish, the the color scheme to the purple, that means that parcel will generate on the per acre base more revenue. Right? So so this is the county tax only. And we to see here, this is when we put all the tax unit onto that parcel. Remember, we have all the taxing and we have municipality, we have school district, we have cemetery district, you know, we put all those tax unit on. This will give you this picture. But then this is, you can see, you know, this is, I think this is a good way to present, thinking about what is the county part, what is all the taxing and the part. I think sometimes um um it's it's even my wife always asking the question, you know, looking our our property tax bill. I really need to explain to her, you know, this is, this is the city portion, this is the county portion, this is the fire district, and we are in this school district. So
Thank you for doing that.
And and then because occasionally, sometimes the her friends would tell her, you know, yeah, we we are living here, uh we are still in, because I'm I live in Mays, we're still in the Mays um district, but not, I'm I'm not in the Mays city. I said, yes, because those boundaries are not the same. So but anyway, so you can see this is, this is, yes.
That's a great map. Doctor, so you can also see the aerospace clusters are basically blank. Because of the taxing jurisdiction and the IRBs and whatever.
Exactly. So
That is uh, that's a great map, both of those, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you. So then here is the sales tax. This is the sales tax. And I think this immediately you can spot something is here. Why we have this one here in two thousand fifteen and that one disappearing in twenty ninety-two? Clearwater, two thousand fifteen, they still have the Walmart there. Yeah, I think this, at at least, at least it's our data Walmart, Walmart is still located in. Yeah. So you can see this is the sales tax. Then we put all together, right? So it's now you can see, we will put, start with the property test, show the sales tax, now we combine them together. So it's always a nice way, thinking about, um you know, to look at um, you know, temporarily, you know, time-wise, thinking about we're starting from two thousand fifteen, now it's in twenty twenty-two. I mean, later on, I'll show some summary um descriptions as well. And then you see, this is, this is the some kind of a difficulty of doing a county, because given the area. When you look at this map, yeah, you see, but it's still, uh, I I want to know some details, some different regions. So what we do is we can get into the jazz later on, I can, if we still have time. I can remotely connect my computer to show you really in the GIS, and then we can zoom in, zoom out, look at some details. But this is really from different angle, right? Now, if you're thinking about kind of a bird view, now it's from the northeast, northwest, southeast and southwest. Different angle to look at our county, to see how those, you know, the property uh is located, how much revenue is generated. Okay, so here again, it's not that, that column doesn't mean it's that total revenue collected. It is still, remember, that's the revenue per acre. That is standardized. Okay, so another way of looking this is you can compare residential versus commercial. And this is, you can see what is our uh residential area looks like, what is that uh commercial is located. And you can do this, um, as I said, you can, the 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 good thing about this kind of analysis, you're thinking about uh time-wise. And also we call that cross-sectional wise, you know, compare peer comparison, those kind of things. So this is two type of uh properties you can compare with. And then another thing is what you can do, we can use this as thinking about the sales tax. Sales tax, the behind that, you can see different categories. Right? They can have wholesale, they can have retail, you know, information, construction. Then you can, you can sometimes identify, if you look at the different year, you can identify their category changes. I think here there's a, you can see there's a this one is purple here, but in twenty twenty-two, it becomes red. This has changed the category. So now you can you know, catch those kind of changes by looking those um maps. So that's kind of, you know, from different region, from the overview, um I just, we just pick um three spot for the illustration purpose. We can definitely do more, but look at the century, central downtown. This is between fifteen and twenty twenty-two. Uh you know, you can see the the color change and kind of, you know, nicely change, then you can think about how our downtown is developed. This is East Town Square. I just could pick a central East Town Square. This is the new market square. Yeah, so um you you can spot something then, you know, later on, because this is the presentation, we not go to that kind of level of detail, but definitely you can go to that. Uh anything you are interested, point to that one to see the the detailed information on that. Okay, so here, this is what the student did. I didn't do this. I don't know how to do this. So it's actually we can see year by year. But this is starting with two thousand fifteen. Already moved to two thousand sixteen. Now you can, you can see our, I will, I think it's kind of zoom in, zoom out, were a little bit difficult. They can do this. Oh, wait, I think need to so this is fifteen. I'm trying to do this without this moving. Yeah, so this kind of page by page, you can see how that changes from sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Right? So okay, here's something is actually not in the report. Uh Lindsay said, you know, it will be very interesting to look at different districts. Okay, so this is, this is something, this is for the district one. And um this is for district two. And this is for three. And here's district four. And this is district five. So this is the snapshot from that. I mean, later, as I said, after finishing presentation, we can still go into the GIS and then kind of zoom in and zoom out.
Thank you, Doctor, for that presentation on these districts. I'm curious, are they, they, do they have the same Z scale um on the different, on the different slides, the the vertical scale, are they the same on the five slides?
I'll show you this one. Just just bear with me a little bit. I'm talking, I will talk about something about this uh thinking about the different district in terms of a number of parcels they have, what is their average revenue per acre, what is their median uh revenue per acre thing. I don't know whether that directly address you uh address your question, but let's just wait until I finish this slide. Okay, thank you. Yeah. So here, as I said, it's a by district, but on this, it's actually, I want to give you a a map of a kind of overview, what's happening in the county. So this is the number of growth, thinking about from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-two. So our puzzle count total increased by two point five three percent. Okay, um so that's, that's for the property tax. Sales tax is actually decreased. We declined by nine point six nine percent. It's it's the number of the parcels that generates sales tax. Doesn't necessarily mean
Okay.
the number of business, because you can have a building, have multiple
Can we, can you, can I ask for some clarity on that? Why, why would that be? I understand that's not sales tax in in dollars amount, that's number of parcels. So we have lost the, we've lost nine point six nine percent of parcels in our county that are producing sales tax revenue. That's correct, that's a correct way of saying that?
It's only the parcel is like, does not capture, again, does not capture the number of business, because it's possible some business can be now kind of located in one building, because that would be only
Well, I'm trying to understand. Yeah, that would be indicative of a declining growth market. So I'm trying to, that'll be combined parcels. I'm trying to understand.
So um actually, this is timely, because we're going to have a solid waste fee discussion in a week or two. And one of the issues that came up in that discussion, and we'll ask Mark to be prepared to discuss it. Is they really have been cleaning up parcels and things. And so we need to talk through what that timeline was and whether or not that could have impacted, but certainly that could be over a seven-year period, that could certainly be part of it.
That would make sense.
Yeah. And also, uh uh remember, this is just from the starting point, two thousand fifteen to two two thousand twenty-two, there's a fluctuation in between. Okay, uh but uh on the average revenue per acre uh from property tax is actually increased by almost eleven percent. The median um uh sales tax is seventeen, seventeen point uh uh seventeen point eight, eighteen percent. The median revenue per acre, because we kind of, you know, thinking about the mean and median, the median is actually property tax increased by twenty-three point eight percent. And sales tax increased by uh thirty-six point one four percent. So, so let me just um here. Okay, so I create something like here that you can, I I may need to move to this angle so that I can, let's start with, because for this dashboard, we can play around this. So just um before I change anything. So this is, um actually, I put four graphs there on this dashboard. First is the um puzzle count. Then you can see on the bottom two, let me move this, it's the average revenue per acre and the median revenue per acre. On that uh uh upright um corner, I call that dispersed, I use the standard relation, but anyways, and how uh closely they cluster around around me. So in this one, we can see um if you want to say first, let's check, this is, this is just the property tax only. And uh we want to see, we just check off all those districts for now, or just a update. So you can, you can compare each district with our total. Right? So I just leave the district five here, but I can check this off. And you look at, this is, this is just the totals in terms of um, you can see our oh, thank you. The puzzle count, I see, I show this kind of trend. This person is relatively stable, right? You can see this is the uh average and this is our median. I mean, you need to um be a little bit careful, the skill is not the same, even though it kind of show the same, right? But the good thing is um it's, I I should not say it's a good thing, that the fact is that our, for every district and the total, the mean is actually greater than the median. Which means there's um, there's in each region and in the county as a whole, there's some property there, they have higher you know, revenue per acre can drive this distribution a little bit right words uh skill. Yeah, um but I think the meat, I mean, I I still need to go back and take a closer look to see whether that gap shrinks or not. I think it's my uh, God help me, probably remain pretty stable if you look at those um maps. So this is property tax, before I do the district thing, let me put the sales tax up. Can see, this is, this is how the sales tax changes. This is the parcel count kind of declining here. Uh, but the average revenue per acre and the median, they're all going up. But again, I just keep reminding, remember, this is, this is still talking about that kind of the average, um, this is the revenue per acre generated, not the total revenue. Right, so then uh if you want, you can see, I want to know how those districts looks to each other. Yeah, to me, there's some kind of interesting pattern shows up here, right? If you look at the mean here, the average revenue per acre, this is, this is, remember this is sales tax. Then you can see this is district four and five. That here, and but when you look at the median, district four, it's actually four, um, this is five, I think where is four? This, this one is four. Yeah, so you can see this is, you know, the thinking about the mean and the median, they, their, their ranking will change. So this is for the sales tax, and you can also look at, I think, I'll just show the property tax. So this is a property tax. Because I have the total here, this skill will be totally kind of, you know, dis- distorted. But once I took that to total off, I can, I can take this off, I can have a. Yeah, and you can see, so the average revenue per acre from property tax, you know, um, district one here, but their median is actually not, you know, median is lower than districts, right? So, I mean, I'm just, uh, this is a starting point to show that you can, you know, make this. Uh, I, I think Lindsay just want me to, to kind of emphasize how we can use this kind of stuff.
But when I see that, I mean, just quick questions, I want to make sure I'm understanding it, that there's a density component to this. So the, when I, I begin to think about infill opportunities and other things to create more density per acre.
Yeah.
From a policy standpoint.
That's, that's exactly, um, but, but I want to provide a balanced view. Because this one, this type of analysis sounds like an advocating for that kind of density development pattern. But I would take it as a kind of opportunity to just provide alternative way to think about this. But then it's not necessary, we have to just go for most efficient way, but we can, but, but the thing is, whatever we make the choice today will affect our financial sustainability in the future, right? Do we want to take a, take a look of the map? Yes, we do realize there are some kind of, you know, um, I say higher, not higher value, but kind of more efficient places. But there's definitely, there should have some kind of cross subsidy going on. Do we want to have a better, and we can say, okay, we can put something there, we can put something there. This is why when you, this is, okay, let me go back to that um slice, just bear with me a little bit. So thinking about along that line. And move to the next one, yeah. Here, this is, this is why thinking about um, basically, that's what we can do with this analysis. Doing those kind of comparisons, looking at time wise, compare with the districts, looking at the specific region, those kind of thing. But then is what is, what is our um, you know, what can we do with this? Right, so one thing is, right, just mentioned kind of infill strategy, right? So basically, we want to identify those regions that can be really efficient. And especially thinking about when we do, this is, this is why I said, this is kind of linking the financial information to the land use policy. Because land use policy, you know, thinking about regulation, those kind of stuff, but rarely they think about what is this a structural um balance between the revenue expenditure? Because here, another thing is, we, we start with the revenue, I'll talk about the next step. But we, we start with the revenue, right? And then, you know, maybe thinking about type of new development and the location. You know, we're thinking about the park or residential area, single family house versus multi unit. Um, big box store or some kind of office building, you know, those kind of thing, and where to put that. And then, because we really need to consider is the fiscal, fiscal impact of this kind of patents.
I would say also, so we're talking about upzoning and those opportunities as well. Remember that we are considering impact of solar policy for our comprehensive plan and our zoning. So this is also a conversation that, that could be linked to that as well. As to what does that type of land use do to this sort of per acreage revenue? And fill opportunity with different types of use.
Right.
Let's want to draw that connection.
Uh, especially thinking about the, the local government also needs to think about infrastructure investment strategies, right? We, that, as I said, you know, this is the first step, start with the revenue, and I'll talk about the next step. Then we'll extend to the, to the expenditure side, that will include the infrastructure thing. Uh, I put this collaboration between county and municipalities. Because now if you recall those maps, it's really those high efficient places is all those kind of urban. Because there's, undoubtedly, this is kind of, you know, favoring the urban development. Um, but, but still, as I said, um, we, we need to think about um, maybe identify those underutilized parcels, some vacant laws. How we want to, this is kind of the part of the infill strategy, right? Because it's the, the infrastructure is already there. You know, thinking about the, as a dense area, you're thinking about, okay, this is the revenue they generated, this is the cost they need to consider when they put uh any infrastructure there, right? So that's why, and also aligning more closely with the services. Right, the road is not only the new road, but the maintenance, that would be anything. And you know, go to this kind of cycle. And as I mentioned, I said, right now, the G F O A and land uh, Lincoln Land Institute. And now talking, they have a group meeting now, is talking about the financial indicators. But it's, it's really focusing on, they call the, the level four indicator, is the service indicator. They are now collecting ideas, I, I know, because I was uh in their meeting last time. They were talking about, yeah, uh, how about this? They call the land use, they kind of struggle with land use density or land use intensity. Right, so, but definitely, this land use start to be considered when we're thinking about the financial sustainability in the future. And that's, that's a movement, um, that's kind of the direction that G F O A is trying to lead to. Um, yeah, some, you know, construction vertical, right? And thinking of parking lot versus a garage. I mean, talking about the solar, if a garage is a solar, right? So it's, all I'm saying that is, it just gave us a, an opportunity. This is what I put here, thinking is as, as, as an opportunity, kind of a, a ton, uh, alternative way to look at the revenue and later on expenditure. I think that is the kind of the message we're trying to uh send to this project. Um, so this is why I said, you know, balance. We do need to admit, we do have a low density area, we have a high density area, right? But when we're thinking about that, um, you know, how we want to balance that. We need to acknowledge, definitely, there is a kind of a cross subsidy going on. But, you know, for the common good, for this whole community, for the county as a whole, we probably need to start this conversation. This is why I put some kind of collaboration, is not only county with the, you know, the municipality, but thinking about uh in the bigger uh picture, right? I mean, um, probably working together, get the state money, I'll get the federal fund, right? That's all the strategy we need to think about. Um, and um, and also, this thinking about the fairness issue, equity issue. Um, this will lead me to thinking about what's next, right? So this is the starting point of the revenue. Uh, compared to the next step, I'll say this is still relatively easier, even though I know a lot of difficult work she needs to put in. Uh, but compared to the, the, the second stage will be a little bit more difficult, because second stage, we're trying to map those expenditures, you know, attached to the land, to the, to the, this so called, maybe at that time won't be the per acre. But we'll find a geographical unit to represent that. So later on, we may have, you know, forget about those parcels, but kind of thinking about this whole county into those grades. Right, because then you can thinking about the revenue expenditure, there are certain expenditures, we have to make assumption, kind of spread uh, the whole, whole county. Um, and then um, those infrastructure, right? Um, usage of the vacant land. Linking demographic information, this is the one I talked with Lindsay. It's potentially this, what, what we can do is, we can drill down to the census. Um, I think it's the lowest the unit, the census track group, they have all the demographic information. Then you can really see how as a government, you know, spending collect money and then linking with that demographic information. Um, along the analysis, you know, we'll, we'll have some new questions pop up there. And we'll see some different patterns. And when we see the result, then we, we can, you know, use our knowledge to, to interpret that, interpret that, and then later on. Thinking about any policies we want to make. And hopefully, this is, this is the task I assume that I'm having, is try to help the local government to provide alternative ways to facilitate their decision making. Yeah, I'm not here to make the decision, but I just want to, you know, because now we are talking about data driven, evidence based decision making. I'm just trying to provide those tools, yes. And then last one, I thought Brent um earlier, but you know, thinking about our tax incentives. Those TIF districts, right? Because as I said, remember, when I do the presentation, you can have this kind of overview, you can always drill down to a certain region. So this is the one you can see, okay, if we want, really want to have a look of how effective um tax incentive policy is, this is one of potential tools you can use. And so there's um, I mean, for county, there's no annexation, but you know, thinking about city. Uh, again, it's, it's, what is the pattern of your land development? You try to divide this into what type of immunity or what have structure you want to put there? So that's, that's the, that's the question we are facing every day. Uh, but I'm hopefully, I think this one can make an extra tool there for you to consider. And of course, I'm more than happy to answer the question. Thank you, thank you so much.
Very good presentation, any questions or comments?
Can I show you?
Are we getting a copy of this where we can play with these? No, not this, because I tried to read the charts in here and it's an ICAS, so uh, do we get the point where we can play with it and, and click on different things like they did here?
Yes, I'll share the uh PowerPoint.
Okay.
I'll share the PowerPoint, and for that one, I think you are particular talking about uh this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, the G I S I cannot provide, that one, because that would need, oh, yeah, I, I don't know. Let's do the question, because I can still show you um, one thing is here. This will allow me to control my uh laptop at my office. I think now. What is it?
While, while he's aware that, I think it might be imperative that we, this type of presentation probably needs to happen with the planning department and the planning commission, I think they need to see some of these conversations and.
And, and how long until we get the, the demographic data included in this? So I think comparing this demographic data against some of the numbers is valuable.
Uh, I think that plan has been approved, so we will conduct the study. The proposed timeline is starting now until November. Thank you. Yeah, so the plan is we'll do the, we'll do the uh expenditure first. So, because now we have the revenue, it's really, before we touch demographic, I want to have all the fiscal information from both sides. Revenue and expenditure, and then link to the demographic. Because you're only linking the revenue with demographic without looking at the expenditure, it will not be a full picture. So I want to get that, but uh, the reason though, you know, I, we foresee this attaching the expenditure will be more difficult than this one. Um, because that's not, because here, those revenue information, you really, this building, you have the record there. But thinking about all those pipes, you know, the road, um, how to allocate, when you do the maintenance, what is the debt on that, you know, that will be more complicated than this. So eventually, something like, I said, this is not the, the total new thing, I know other jurisdictions did this, right? Ideally, the final product you'll see, because it's kind of like, it's thinking about now, the map I show you is uh above the ground, that's the ready, right? And we can put the underground, there's the expenditure, and you can have a map thing there. So that will be the, what I kind of try to vision in the, the, the product. But definitely, it depends on how we gather the data and move that direction. Let me see where I put that one. Right. That times we get that G I S more team, so this is.
You need G I S for your questions. Lindsay, while she's pulling that up, what, if you don't mind, I got a few questions. How, how would you, and how would you, I mean, obviously, land use and revenue per land use, but how should we be analyzing and interpreting some of this data?
Well, I think from a revenue perspective, it's interesting, because we have a lot of talk about how we allocate resources. I mean, senior senators always comes to mind, that's a conversation we have frequently about how we fund that. I think when we start looking at the C I P for road and bridge, and when we start thinking about where are we going to build facilities and invest. Um, that's where I see a lot of benefit from the revenue side too, is just this data of where, where are the gaps, where are there opportunities to infill, where can we most effectively and efficiently put our resources that aren't going to generate tax revenue relative to those things? I think once we get the expense side, I think that opens a whole new door to thinking about the way we budget, the way we approach program budgeting. Making sure that we're getting dollars to those programs that serve folks in those areas that have the most need. And so it's not going to happen overnight or in one budget cycle. But I think it exposes new ideas to us to think about how we decide to invest the resources we get and how to make sure that we're. But I think it exposes new ideas to us to think about how we decide to invest the resources we get and how to make sure that we're. Maybe not fair because fair would be everybody getting exactly what they put in, but equitable. Make sure the resources get where they need to go. So I think this is just stage one, and I do see a lot of benefit from a land use and code and zoning standpoint. But I think down the road, there's going to be a lot of benefit from a budget and C I P perspective too.
Great.
Sorry. Um but there's one chart I talked about disperse at the top, right? Could you please explain how how is that word used?
I'm gonna let him speak to that.
And then I'll get to that in a minute then. And is there an is there an intention for this G I S to be available for us to manipulate? Some details, we can take a look at these charts.
At at this time, that has not been the intention that I am certain um with enough money that we would pay, I am certain we can figure that out.
Okay, um. So I guess to Mr. Dennis's point, um what what we being shown here are snapshots of someone else's. They thought was interesting. I think the charts we've seen today, e- each one of these charts probably deserves some interpretation. You know, because some, you know, you you might see, for example, one district might be above the other. What does that mean? You know, how do you interpret that? Is it is because the districts are different sizes? Is it because there's socio socioeconomic? Drivers that causes those lines to be where they are? Is there uh maybe uh? Maybe an intent to invest in certain part of the county and maybe another part of the county has some. Potential neglect, perhaps. We ought to look at that, maybe look at it that way. Um I think each charts do require interpretation. And again, they're interesting, but. Also, you know, you notice like my, I was just sort of a district two, there were the top of the chart on one chart and there the bottom of the chart on the next chart. So there's, that that does require interpretation, right? Um. And I don't want to bother him while he's trying to navigate here, but one of my questions on that disperse, that disperse uh chart, I would like to have an explanation what they mean by that exactly. On that particular chart, but we'll get to that whenever he's ready.
Well, and I will comment on that if you're okay. And this is step one in a process. I think. Lauren and I evaluated this proposal and thought it sounded fascinating. And when we got the data, it was more interesting and yielded more than we even realized. And we realized this was not something for just finance to have. This was something that needed to be shared with you all. So this is only stage one. I can envision this being a multi-year type of project or analysis that we come back and look at and figure out how to integrate and address those questions because you're right, the demographics matter. The intentional use of land use up till now matters. So.
We saw, we saw revenue uh in terms of sales tax and use tax. And property tax. We didn't know, did we see a chart that relates to property value? Was that presented?
Not, no.
Was not.
Yeah, this one is basically concentrate on the revenue.
And there's no other type of revenue in terms of like uh. I I'd be very difficult to get, I'm sure, but is there any other type of revenue? Analysis that could be done besides what we've already seen today, sales and sales, you know, sales use and property taxes. Are there other types of revenue? I saw I saw some fee, you know, some charge for services. That was also, I guess I wasn't part of the uh. There was a chart that talked about it, but we didn't see graphical of that, right?
Right.
Okay. And then I guess another thing I saw would be all of these vertical, I use the word vertical, really the Z axis that comes out of the out of the map, if you will. Again, we see a comparison between, you know, relevant to each other, but there's no scale anywhere. There's no, what does that line represent in terms of a number? Okay, well, I see. Okay, there they are. Okay, I can see on the charts here.
Yeah, here, there's an legend here, you know, different color will have the value there.
Was that in the, was that in the booklet?
Yeah, it's also in the booklet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Page eleven.
So being able to zoom in on that.
Yeah, you can.
That would be, it's hard to, it's hard to see what we're looking at there if you don't zoom in and take a, you know, where is it exactly what building we're talking about, that type of thing. So.
Yeah, that really requires you zoom in there, get that information like here if I. I think which district is this one? I think this is district five. Oh, this four, okay. Oh, I see this one is true. Yeah. Oh, yeah, this is four and five are off here. Yeah, because those two um checked. So yes, you can, this is why I said, you know, you can use this one, uh you can get in, zoom in. And if you want to look at the specific address, that kind of area. Uh even the particular um property, then you can take a look at that. I agree with you. I mean, I, I talked with Dr. Stan this morning, but that, you know. This uh for the presentation purpose, we may. Think about, you know, next step when we do that is actually we want to show. I say this is, this is kind of a price value map looks like this because we 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 have some buildings, even though they have high value, but they're taxed except. Alright, so we may want to show that one as well. Yes, as 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 in our mind. Uh yeah, this, yesterday we just don't have time to put that because it's because this run again is. But focusing on the revenue generated, um but I know there's a behind that, there's a, there's a a appraisal value there, assessed value. Yep.
So uh the back to the, uh it was an odd, an odd chart here back in twenty fifteen, you said it was a Walmart in Clearwater, but it it goes off the top of the page. Relevant to everything and everything else on that particular chart, Walmart in Clearwater. Was the largest graphic on that page. How is that possible?
Because that's just thinking about the, because a- again, it's really depends on how you calculate that parcel for the for the Walmart. You know, it's really, that's why I said later on what we need to do is just uh because this is based on the parcel, particular parcel. This is really depends on the uh, you know, um. How you draw that parcel shape, but later on what we are trying to do is I said, uh like like the those the grade. Because then you will incorporate the building versus the the street there. And also the the land is, you know, it's really, I I was, I was a little bit puzzled by that as well because the thing is. Is usually you're thinking about the big box stall, like, you know, Walmart, because they have, if they're taking into consideration of their parking lot, right, they take a large um acreage. That will kind of lower that number on, uh lower that number, but it's really depends on, a- again, it's really depends on how you draw that puzzle. You need to look at the puzzle information, which they only do those buildings and it's possible that.
Actually, this is, this is a uh. Sales tax per acre, so it's a based on a certain size of, you know, not just parcel but acre, so.
Uh though, but they're thinking about how we calculate that, it's depends on. No, 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 it's it's depends on how we we use that per acre because that's the the. Uh we need to get the acreage of that puzzle. Then divided that, you get that one.
I understand. So the, you know, if the parcel is very small. And and the sales tax is generated from, if you will, tagged, if you will, to a very small. Piece of property, but then this is per acre, that's why I'm, that's why I'm confused. If I said per parcel, I would get that. It says per acre, so you would think of a normalized the data saying. If the parcel is very small, you would, you would divide, you would, you would normalize that data saying. If we're only talking to twen-, you know, a twenty square foot acre parcel, but an acre is forty five thousand square feet, I don't know, forget the number now. Anyway, you would normalize that data so it's per acre, and I don't know if that. Had that stat because I don't. And it was also.
I think the next, when we talk about the grade, will address that concern. Because currently, the the way we do the calculation, it really, we need to take that puzzle, particular puzzle. We know the area of that puzzle, then how much revenue generated by that puzzle? Then we calculate that thing called revenue per acre because that's, you know, for example, that puzzle is one point five acre. Right? But versus if you are thinking about this grade is ten acre, that will kind of further standardize, then you'll see, oh, okay, in this grid, this is all. Um you know, this is, this is ten acre, this is ten acre, then you are talking about this. I know, I know where you are coming from, so because, yes. Because it's, that that's why I said it's really depends on how you draw that puzzle. Because we're using the puzzle information. It's the puzzle area and the puzzle. Um it will be hard, even you're thinking about per parcel, because that will not, because you still need to try to standardize that. Because the the puzzle will be different, and you may have a puzzle. One acre, there's another puzzle, two acre, but you know, we want to standardize that, that's why.
That that's exactly what I'm trying to say, though. Yeah, if acre is forty three thousand five hundred sixty square feet, that's the number. If it's a twenty square foot parcel and you you somehow associate. Revenue, say you had a, you know. You know, hundred thousand dollars with the revenue, but it was only on twenty square feet, you would say, well, but twenty square feet is of forty three thousand five sixty. You would, you would, you would convert that to a dollars per acre, which I don't, again, it sounds like this maybe wasn't done the way I'm envisioning that, but the other. In my, in my question also, it shows in twenty fifteen, a giant spike, then in twenty twenty two, it's gone. So what happened to cause that to go? Down unless it's a construction project perhaps? Or it's short closed, I don't know if that happened there. Okay, alright, yeah.
Right. Um I would just, if if you don't, I I think this is a great snapshot of where we currently are, and I love the metrics, I think this is valuable. There's two things that I think would be helpful for me. Is is number one is, can we get an example of other counties or cities and their land use policy? Um. Some comps that we would say, hey, this is a great community that's doing things that is, that the growth or maximizing their land use per acre. That way we can actually study the policy that's influencing it. I think that would be helpful. The other one is, I would love to know. Uh on page four, we're looking at revenue structure in Sedgwick County. Uh I I would love to use a comp outside of Kansas too, to see what the property tax, sales tax relationship looks like in some of these comp communities where. Uh we may target four or five communities and say, well, they're, they are doing some things from a gross standpoint and land use standpoint that is admirable. Um and what does that relationship look like compared to what we have today? I think the comp would help uh me in particular in evaluating how we develop policy.
I think during our first conversation, we mentioned this already, because we, it's it's, that's why we're always seeing this as a starting point. This is revenue, it's starting point, also this the study, the county alone is the starting point. Later on, definitely, as Lindsay said, this can be a multi-year um project that we can think about. Um then I, you all have to identify. You know, the um community or the county we're looking at to compare. I mean, I was, it was. I think I A Times has a pretty good article comparing Wichita with Omaha.
That would be an interesting comp to understand, yeah.
Yeah. So I heard some, I heard some comments saying that uh. You know, we can see Wichita is kind of ten years ago Omaha. Because that that article is particular, you know, comparing those two rich person in each of the community, how that influenced the development of that region.
Lindsay, what do you think?
Uh so. I think the only thing I want to throw out there is just, um we have a proposal that was approved. Because it's accessing W C M L E V funds, and so that proposal includes a specific scope. And some things, and so I think we're very happy to work with him to expand that scope, but I just want to make sure that it's understood by the commission that this isn't something that. You're just kind of engaged for a full scale analysis. Right now, there's a a pretty specific scope that we're driving off of, and I just don't want to put him in any bad spot by. But we can certainly work with him to grow that scope and get you guys what you need. I just want you to know that. It's a little bit of a different relationship because of how this project is going.
Okay. So is this the limitation? Are we done here or this is just the beginning? Okay, so.
We already have that second proposal that Dr. Guo mentioned about looking at the next step, the expenses and the demographics and all of that already in queue. And I think if it's okay, we can always go back and work to refine or do addendums and amendments to get some of this other information incorporated. Um. And certainly we can work with G F O A two to see if they have recommendations or policy recommendations to your first question about, you know, who's really doing it right? Based on this approach. Um so I I think we can get where you want to go. It's just going to be a little bit of an awkward situation. November.
Yeah, the next step, the next step is including the expenditure. Uh attaching the demographic information, um that cross sectional comparison is not in the.
Okay, yeah, okay.
But uh.
Might be worth a conversation. I think it'd be helpful from the policy. Any other questions or comments?
And I just want to say, you know, at the very beginning, I said, I'm here, I'm trying to see, using my expertise, kind of ask to help the community.
This is great. Thank you so much for this work. This is, I think this is fascinating. It's going to be really helpful in. Shaping some of the policy and the direction we want to go, so. Very good work, Doctor. Appreciate you guys. Tom?
Um we we want to go through, so I do this one comment real quick, you and I had some sidebar going back and forth. This is, I think, interesting information for all planning commissions.
Yes.
In in the county. I think the chamber would have interest in this. I think G W P would have interest in this. We, we. Generally will take part in city to city trips, and I think some of those cities become peer analysis to where you're headed with comps. Um so I think there's a lot of discussion we'll have and and I'll talk to city manager about it as well. Uh and and all of the area managers about this. I think this is. There's just a lot of interest in this. I think it it'll take a while to evolve, but I think this is. Um a good way to look at how we develop our county and our region moving forward.
Well, Tom, I'd say that very much so because we talk about housing shortage and deficit and the supply, but also the need to grow. We have an economic growth. So thank you. This is wonderful. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Tony, we had a few legislative items for cleanup for commission today too, so.
Items uh this morning and looking for some direction from the connection, so. Um I sent an email last night and I'm going to go over that and then just a couple of additional items as well. Um first item I want to go over is uh this Thursday, um. There is a hearing um with the House Social Services Budget Committee, and I spoke about this last Friday. Uh the chairman um this Monday gave uh oral testimony on the forty million that's put into K D A's budget for the homeless uh infrastructure brand. And what I thought we would do is just basically provide the same, um. Um just provide the same testimony and of course, um address that to the House uh Social Services Budget Committee. Um unless the chairman in his oral testimony uh sees the need to make any uh adjustments to that um written testimony there, so. I'll kind of hand it over to the chairman.
If you don't, so let's clarify. So yesterday was a subcommittee on Senate Ways and Means. What is the Thursday? Clarify what the Thursday uh committee meeting would be.
It's, so it's the House Social Services Budget Committee, so it's the House side basically.
Okay.
And they're hearing the same thing. It's this forty million that's put into um the K D A's budget for the homeless infrastructure.
Okay. Seven twenty three.
No, this is, this has nothing to do on the House bill. This is only the appropriations piece. But when I talked to Jason, I said, is it okay to reference the House bill in our written testimony? He said that was okay. But the main purpose of this is just the appropriations that forty million put into the K D A's budget.
I'm supportive of the forty million put into the K D A's budget. Uh my worry has always been, does it look like Sedgwick County is taking the lead on this? Or is this Wichita, who's who's taking the lead on this? So because I don't believe that it's the Sedgwick County lead.
It's been a topic of conversation. Um I. I don't know if Wichita's sending anyone up to, now they're there today. C O C is up today and so is Sally Stang Housing Department. They're up today in Topeka. Um I don't know. Um I don't know if we're sending anyone up on Thursday. Or not. Now, we can't go simply because we have budget workshop. Um but. I'm not sure. When I, when I gave oral testimony yesterday, it was really about the homeless ecosystem in the state. I didn't even mention the MAC project for the city of Wichita. I did reference the House bill because Representative Howell had uh been. Provided testimony right before me. Um so. I I would be okay with the letter. Um I I don't know if it's a needed change. There's a lot of conversations happening on the side and a lot of conversations happen directly with legislators. So I I think most people now are starting to get a feel for this and. Um but anybody else has, I I would be okay with this letter, as Commissioner Dennis had mentioned, unless anybody else has other comment.
I I'm, I think, I think you have, well, I'm okay with the letter, but I think that's um. Minimum, I, and again, just from my personal experience and and again, from being around legislature for a while. If you don't have someone there, they don't give it the same weight. I'm just telling you the practical truth here. If we can't have someone from the commission go, certainly we can have someone from the county go. And if not, someone from the city should go. There should be oral testimony to accompany this letter. Because if you don't have oral testimony, they they might even just miss it. They will, they probably, here again, they're overwhelmed. They're, they're, this is the time of the session where they they go, they may get twenty pieces of written testimony. And have three or four people speak, and the people who speak get the, get their attention. And the the written testimony, they might glance at who wrote it, but they don't necessarily take time to read it. They're just, that's just the truth. That's the way it works. So having someone do oral testimony is key, and you can't do oral without written. That's the rule. So the written is a is a given. You have to do that. I think the letter is great, and I think we should submit this letter, but I think we have to have someone from the county. If not the commission, someone from the county. Should present on behalf of the county orally, so that they will in fact pay attention to it. And again, I would never read the testimony. But simply refer to it and but but having. But simply refer to it and but but having someone stand there and and provide oral testimony is a key. Strategy. And if you don't do that, then they don't think it's important.
But I'm just a little concerned about the priorities that you put on people to speak. Because you listed a bunch of people from Sedgwick County and then kind of put as an afterthought City of Wichita. City of Wichita needs to be at the top of this list, and we are supporting them. We're good partners with City of Wichita, but we are not the lead on this.
Yeah, I it's, I tried to make some things very clear in my testimony and what my tie to was economic. And behavioral health in particular, that you cannot have a balanced behavioral health approach, which is something squarely in our purview without homelessness in the equation. So I try to keep it very limited, our. Purview very limited and specific on what our scope of service is and and advocating for the state's role. But. I I guess we can ask if the city is going to have someone there. I would, do you want time to testimony or what time they hear it? It's at three thirty? Would it be the same equivalent if we had someone via Zoom? The same equivalent? I don't know if getting the commission to get there. I think the budget, the budget is our top priority. Um, and that workshop is going to be important, but. Would it be the same equivalent if we had someone virtually there?
Commissioner Dennis's point, I completely agree, and I think the city. Would would be very, very wise to have someone there. I hate, I hate to say it this way, but I feel like. We're the ones that host those meetings. We had great attendance. We had a great participation and the city. Participated minimally, and I don't think they understand what's happening to the degree that we do. And I, again, no offense to them, I know they're doing their very best to do. Awesome, but they ought to have a presence there. They should be there. I agree with Commissioner Dennis, and I wish they would take that role. But to the extent they're not committed to it that we that we're aware of, I don't know that they have done anything. Uh, with in terms of testimony to the subcommittees or or any any particular public positioning on twenty seven twenty three. That that is a concern. And again, we're at the very critical point. If if we don't have two strategic successes, if that bill doesn't pass out of committee. Or the appropriations committee decides to recommend stripping that out. Which would be their decision, this decision of this subcommittee is going to make a recommendation to be appropriate, Senate Ways and Means. They will either leave that in or take it out, and that's what's going to happen. So. If we don't have two successes by leaving it in. The budget, the governor's budget and passing twenty seven twenty three. Both things need to be successful, then this is going to, we're going to lose this. That's, and that may be where we're ended. That's maybe where that we end up. But this is our takes, it takes our attention at this critical time or someone's attention at this critical time for that to happen. Zoom is a. It is better than nothing, but. It is, uh, it's better to have someone there. So it's just strategically, you want to really. Play the game and and do everything you can to be successful. Having someone there is better than Zoom. I've testified lots of times by Zoom, and I love the fact that they offer that opportunity, but. It's always better to be there.
Yes, I'll just say where I'm at with this, just so it's known between us. Um. I have no problem sending the letter, but I I agree that if our role is a supportive role to the city. Are we the right ones to go and speak? I mean, I don't know if that's. Us, or I mean, I would really hope that the city would be there to speak, that they would be the ones, you know. Writing a letter and speaking and all things, and I and I want to be as supportive as we can to their efforts. And not the other way around, because I I feel like if this, if we were talking about comm care and the city were trying to lead in efforts on what we're doing with comm care. We would feel a certain kind of way, and I don't want to do any damage to the relationship that we're, um, that we have and that we're trying to continue building with the city. And so I just want to make sure that we're being as careful as we can to be the support here and not. The group that is fully leading this without them being there.
Yeah. Well, I fully understand that and.
I I'll just add that, yeah, I I think we're doing a, some of us have been doing a yeoman's job on this and we're just doing the best we can and. I think the city, the new council is trying to get their feet wet on a lot of things, and I know you've got a good relationship with the mayor and and the manager, maybe just relay that, hey. We can't carry all the water, but we'll do the best we can, hope that that they're have a presence. Yeah, can't force them at this point. I I think it'd be. It it, I'm not sure it'd be non beneficial if we just ignored it ourselves because we thought maybe the city was still trying to figure out where they're at. I think just.
So what do we do this?
We need to, yeah, we need to be there just to do the best we can.
I think we reach out, let's figure out, there's got to be some representation there on site. Let's see if there is, let's work with our partnership with the city. Obviously, the issue of homelessness is. It's very much in our purview in regards to its impact in the community from a safety standpoint, economic standpoint, behavioral health standpoint, substance use standpoint, all of it. I mean, it's. It's our responsibility to obviously squarely more in the purview of the city, which is the housing department. Um, but as we've said in our legislative meetings, this is very much a collaborative effort, and we're asking the state to play a role in this too. And I think it behooves us, if the state's playing a role for the county to still maintain our seat at the table. But we we've got to demonstrate collaboration with all of the local government and state government and. Our C O C's private nonprofit based community. Everyone's got to be at the table here. So why don't we, I'll reach out when we finish here and see who's going to be there, and then we can make a decision. On if someone's going to go provide or via Zoom or.
I will tell you that I know on Monday there were a lot of conferees, so if. You want to go Zoom, we could probably push that out a little bit later, our request, um, that maybe we show up a little bit later on that Zoom. So that you could get through.
Okay, we know who, does somebody know who's on the committee? What representative?
Uh, I don't, but we can look into that and we can ask for Jason Jessica's assistance.
Can we do that? Yeah, to figure out who's on that committee, because there's been fifteen, eighteen conversations already. Uh, with direct conversations that many of these people I wonder if we've already talked to, so.
Yeah, I'll be glad to reach out.
Okay.
Okay, second item.
Before we leave that, um, back to the theme of doing the best we can. So is there any chance and on Monday, did anybody from business community come up and testify?
Uh, I do not believe anyone testified on Monday.
So, you know, from a government perspective, there's there's staff, there's elected and there's there's. Um, lobbyists both sides, so Marley's and and Jason have a role in this too. So we can reach out to all of them. I'll be glad to reach out to staff. On the city side, and that's a, there's a limited number of city staff that can go up and articulate on this to the level and breadth that needs to. And then it's, you can count on less than one hand. Same on our side too. There's, there's a certain amount of knowledge here that has to. Happen before we can testify. So I'll reach out to the manager if you could reach out politically, and I'll reach out to Jeff Flor and John. At the chamber too, because this is, it's an opportunity that's going to close here. And if the best we can do is zoom a commissioner, then I think we'll alter our. Schedule how we have to on Thursday to allow a commissioner to at least zoom in, which is better than nothing. Uh, and think about public testimony or personal testimony from a staff that could go up. But and we'll see where the city's at on the same side of that. So now, now, sorry.
Okay. Um, I want to preface this with a, an apology. The chairman let me know this morning that, um, it is Senate Bill four thirty one. The Cape and Memorial statue, there is a hearing tomorrow at ten thirty. Um, and so I I would assume that you are probably not going to be able to make that in person, uh, commissioner, that it's for, um, oral testimony. Um, but I do want to, and I don't know, Commissioner Dennis, if you want to pass that out, Commissioner Dennis had written up some oral testimony. If he was going to be able to make that, um, in person. So, um, just want to talk about if we want to provide written testimony for, uh, this bill, uh, tomorrow that they will have a hearing on at ten thirty. So just want to talk about that. And Commissioner Dennis did provide you with his oral testimony.
Well, thank you. It's unfortunate it's the same time as our board meeting, so it's going to be difficult to attend, but I do, I would like to see us get some written testimony out there. We may have to. Change the way we start this if it's a letter going up there. So, but. If the other commissioners agree, if we could redraft this a little bit, put it in a a written testimony type format, I'd be happy to do that.
I I would be supportive. I spoke with some people up there that have been texting. They've extended the deadline to submit so we can wait. I asked them to. Pause and allow an extension while we finish our staff meeting and told them we'd get something to them in a couple hours, so. I'd be happy to do something from the, as a commission. I think this is a wonder, I read this letter previously, I think it's a wonderful letter. If you wanted to submit it yourself, or if you think it'd be more impactful if the B O C C did a letter, I'm, I'd be in favor of either one.
It's always more impactful if we get the entire B O C C to agree.
Commissioner Pass, what do you think? You be good for an entire?
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with that as well. Just to be clear, I just looked at the fiscal note, there's no, this is a, it sets up a fund to receive. Donations and then the capital preservation committee will at some point, when there's enough funds, will. Expand the funds to create, if you will, an appropriate. That you were the display or whatever it is that they do, it could be anywhere on the grounds in the state capital building. It doesn't have to be necessarily inside or outside. It's not defined in the bill that I can see. Um, so again, there's a lot of decisions in the future that have to be made. All this does, all the bill that it seems to do, I think, is establishing a fund. So. I think that's totally great.
Yeah, I think we have a consensus to do something on behalf of the entire board, so.
Okay, so I may take your written or your oral testimony, uh, redraft it a little bit, and then we'll get it to to the commissioners to review, and then we'll get all. Signatures on that like we did the previous written testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, let me move on to the next one. Uh, this is Senate Bill five hundred and I may lean on Commissioner Howell a little bit. Um, this is one, uh, I believe that Commissioner Howell had a little bit of interest on when it was on the Senate side. Um, so this is about a license when it has been revoked, um, to give a certain driving privileges for certain purposes. And so those, uh, driving, driving privileges would be to drive to and from, um, dropping off and picking up children from school or childcare. Also includes, um, going and returning to the person's place of employment or schooling. Going or returning to, uh, an appointment with healthcare or, excuse me, with a healthcare provider or during a medical emergency. Um, going to and returning from probation or parole meetings, drug or alcohol. And then going to or returning from dropping off or picking up. Oh, that's the same thing, uh, returning, picking up our children or childcare. So. Commissioner Howell, I may, um, just hand it over to you if that's something that you are interested in, uh, providing written testimony on. The hearing is this Thursday at ten thirty. So again, we'll be in that budget workshop.
I would like to provide written, and I might, because of my arm. I would like to have someone help me a little bit because I'm unable to type that much. But I would say this, one of my concerns has been the enormous number of people who have. An ability to drive because of the legal status of the driver's license has been suspended. Um. This is talking about restricted licenses, which is, again, a step in the right direction. This would give them. If you will, the right to drive for certain reasons, against, we don't have great public transportation. Options in Sedgwick County, people to be able to get to work and back and take care of their kids and get food and do the things necessary in life. Now, they're not going to be able to go to the casino. Okay, or. To a concert, okay, or whatever, but they can do the most important things of life, uh. Which are articulated in the bill. I think this is reasonable. It it gets us, um. The framework to get, uh, where people can keep their job. That's the main thing. So, yeah, this is something I want to testify in favor of, and I hope, uh. If I get that done today, would it be something I could have staff check with anybody else and see whether there's any way we can get this to be a commission. Support and bill. I I would love to have that support. Um, so this, this hearing is on Thursday?
It's on Thursday at ten thirty.
Well, we do technically have, if we deal with this early on on Wednesday morning. Uh, we could essentially get to B O C C to. Review and approve this early in our meeting and still send that with B O C C support potentially. Would that be okay?
Okay.
Chairman, would that be okay to do just a, I don't know if it has to be an off agenda necessarily, but at least present this to the. Commission, so if there's any discussion, um. We can certainly have, if you will, a public, um, consent, if you will, that this is something that the B O C C would support and send it out on behalf of the chairman. That'd be great. Thank you.
I'm fine with this, uh, and I don't know if they still have it or not, but, uh. I got my first driver's license when I was thirteen. It was restricted because you could get it as a farm youth to be able to drive into town, get parts and so forth. Yet I could drive to school. I don't know if they still have that or not, but it's kind of along the same line as a restricted license that I got way back when.
Okay, Tony, any other?
Oh, I got a few more.
Okay, good, good.
Next one is House Bill twenty seven fifty four. So there is a hearing next Monday, and so this bill authorizes counties to use home rule power. To exempt, uh, from conducting school sanitary inspections. So on this particular bill, I don't know if we, um, have a commissioner or if we want staff to go up and provide oral testimony. Um, I assume that we most definitely want to provide written testimony because this is our legislative platform. So, uh, just want to have a discussion on this.
This is regarding our exemption?
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
And.
I had a, I had a phone call from up there and and to clarify. We wanted a county by county exemption or statewide, and. And I think we communicated back to Jason that this is just county option. Because, uh, and I think, uh, one of Susan Humphries was comfortable, wanted clarification on that. Think we, uh, we're in agreement, Tim, right? Everybody was.
I I don't think this bill would exist without Sedgwick County actually asking for this bill.
Well, she said Butler County had a nearly identical, so we're on the same.
So that's good, and I wish it would have been on the K A C platform. Frankly, this, just to be clear, this restores us back to where we were prior to COVID. They passed a bill, I think it was inadvertent, unintended consequence that basically established this requirement to inspect schools and. Including private schools and in in Kansas, private schools includes homeschools. So imagine the number of schools. I I don't think they're going into people's homes inspecting schools, but they could technically do that. Uh, under the previous law and. Again, this just restores it back to where we were. I I think two five nine, our biggest school district in. In the state, uh, I think they do a good job managing their own stuff. They don't need us to, you know, stick our. Our business between them and what they do. So if we trust them to do their job, then we don't need to, we don't need to involve ourselves in their business. And I think that's all this is, it restores us back to where we were. And I think we should provide testimony because. They need someone to speak up. And and the reason I, reason I'm even aware of this is I've had schools reach out to me saying, what are you, what are you guys doing now? You're you're basically coming into our facility. Doing things, we didn't ask you to do this, and we never had this before. All of a sudden, now you you're involved in this, and it gets involved in things like there's dust on the playground. Okay, it's a little silly, in my opinion.
Okay, let me just, uh, sorry to clarify, but let me just clarify. As far as oral testimony, is there a commissioner that feels strongly about it, or do you want to send staff on this, um? For the oral testimonies?
What, when was it? When is the hearing?
Well, what I understand from Jason is there's a hearing next Monday. I looked it up on Kansas Legislature and there's, there's nothing listed at this point. So all we know is that there's a hearing on Monday. And as we get more details, I'll, I'll let you know.
That's President's Day. And I I think this is just a a minor cleanup. I think we just provide written, I'm not sure, I'll take Jason's lead, but. If it's, if it, if that ball's rolling, it's just a minor cleanup or like you said.
Jason could speak on our behalf, that'd be, that'd be ideal. I don't think we have to say too much because really. This is probably going to pass. Thank you.
I've got one more item. It'll be quick. Adrian, let me know just really quickly before staff meeting started that there was a bill introduced yesterday. And referred to Senate Committee on Financial Institutions and Insurance, and it would terminate Capers three and transfer Capers three members to Capers two. So, um, no action right now, but just making you aware that there is a bill. So keep you aware as that comes up for hearing and. All I have.
I'll just say one thing, our turnaround is what, February twenty, you say twenty third, I think you said. But in reality, you know, it's going to probably get to be the twenty second. For them to introduce a bill that big, this late in the session is. It's just, my opinion, it's theater. It has no chance of passing. Thank you.
Okay, Chris. Tom, what else?
Need staff to stick around this a little bit so we can get the logistics of getting this bill or get his testimony done.
Very good. That's, anything else seem to come for staff meeting? Today was a good day. Appreciate Lindsay coordinating all the the mapping conversation. Very, very good. Dorian, there you are. Thank you. And see you down there. Thank you, Dorian. Very good.
Good to see you again.
Very good. Okay, tomorrow morning. See you then. Have a good day.